Hi, everyone. Kelly Beatty coming to you live from the Chelmsford Senior Center here in North Chelmsford for the second night of the spring annual town meeting. Now, I hope some of you were with us on Monday night.
Well, everyone, please take your seats. That's the two-minute warning.
That is Moderator Victor Freitas telling me that I have two minutes to tell you what happened on Monday night before he begins. It was a very interesting night, five-hour-long session. The town's budget passed pretty handily, easily, $107 million for fiscal year 2013. The first road bump, if you will, was Article III having to do with the Neshoba Valley Technical School, Technical High School incorporating Ayr into its list of communities. The representatives from Neshoba Tech were apparently unprepared for the financial questions that we town meeting reps had before them. Also, the biggie of the night was the Article 10 having to do with the new fire station, the $7.8 million funding that would be required for that. Two hours of debate, 20 people at least lining up in opposition. A lot of the local people in the neighborhood across from Town Hall that would be affected by this were in opposition to it, probably still are. It'll be up to Building Works Crew and Developer Patrick Maloney here for the town to try to get that situation smoothed over and ameliorated. But that will be going forward. Tonight, the rest of the more approximately 20 articles should go pretty smoothly. I would expect to be out of here in about two hours. A lot of them are basic zoning kinds of bylaws. However, the one dark horse might be community preservation funds, presentation that has in the past, taken quite a bit of time to get through. We'll see if that proves true tonight. And so with that, I invite you to sit down, enjoy our presentation this evening. If enjoying town meeting is something you can do. You know, a lot of these town meeting reps are new, and so we join Victor Freitas for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, fatidic, and just as we're all. Thank you. Are there any representatives that were not sworn in on Monday night? I'll ask again. Are there any representatives that were not sworn in on Monday night? If so, come forward, and the town clerk will sway you in. I don't see any. Okay, the first order of business is we're gonna do a quorum count. Take your clickers, and do not use the dash keys on the top. You use 1, 2, or 3. I suggest for the quorum count, you press 1 now.
One of the things you'll see this evening is the use of the electronic voting, which was not...
And aim at the antenna device right up here.
Which the electronic voting was not working on Monday night and caused several of the votes to take a lot longer than they otherwise might have been. I can see that it is working this evening, and so that will help smooth things along.
Okay, it's obvious we have a quorum. I assume some people pressed the "no" key. Any case, the total shows that we have a quorum. I want to, again, point out where the fire exits are. There's one by the presenter's podium. There's another one behind that camera over here, and there are two on each side, a little more than halfway down. And again, it's my pleasure to introduce the town officials. Town Manager Paul Cohen. Town Council John Giorgio. Town Clerk Onorina Maloney. Town Accountant Darlene Lucia. Town Treasurer or Finance Director John Souza. Finance Committee Chairperson Mary Franz, and she will introduce her committee.
Okay, my committee, starting from the end, Roy Tribble, Sheila Pichette, Sasha Bonachter, Tim McElvenna, Patrice Garvin, and Stratus Tucacas.
And now I give you the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, John Kirland, and he will introduce the remaining board members.
To my far left, George Dixon. Jim Lane. Pat Wojcik, Clerk. Vice Chairman Matt Hanson.
I'd like to introduce a distinguished visitor, Mr. Sandy Gadsby, who is the moderator in the town of Brookline, and he is also President of the Massachusetts Moderators Association. He's here to observe. Side note, good thing he came tonight and not Monday. The electronic voting system. I have a few remarks. Gotta get the right one up here. Welcome to the second session of the spring town meeting. Hopefully, we'll be firing on all cylinders tonight, and we'll get to go home early. I tried something on Monday night that I think ensures fairness and speeds up the process, namely two debate microphones. Tonight, we will continue to use the two microphones in hopes that it will bear that anticipated fruit. One small change: I will accept questions from either microphone during the question-and-answer period. That should put an end to the Q&amp;A shuffle dance. Also, the town bylaw 154-16 clearly states that a roll-call vote only applies to a main motion. It was incorrect for me to even consider it for a procedural motion. So remember, motion to have a roll-call vote can only be applied to a main motion, and that should be after a vote was taken. The town clerk has developed a simple procedure and form for making an amendment to a motion or a First Amendment. These are available in the back of the hall. I fully endorse this procedure, as does town council. This form must be presented to the moderator before the motion is made, and town council must approve the format of the amendment. Now, electronic voting. Some of you have never used it before. You only use the numbered keys, 1 for yes, 2 for no, 3 to abstain. If no number is pressed, you will be recorded as not voting. Don't let anyone else use your keypad. If you leave early, put your keypad in the basket in the center of your table. And remember, if somebody does use it, it's your vote that's recorded. Please silence all cell phones, pagers, and personal digital devices, and any other electronic device you have in your possession. And finally, Article 25 is being amended by the Planning Board. The amendment is in the back of the hall for anybody that wants to read it before we get to that article. We left finishing Article 10, so tonight we will start... Article 11 is no action. Tonight, we will start with Article 12.
I move that we waive the reading of Article 12?
Motion to waive the reading of Article 12. Raise your tickets, all those in favor. opposed? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If I may, at this point, have a point of personal privilege from the moderator at the beginning of this meeting tonight. I think it's appropriate, and particularly with this article, to take a moment to recognize our outgoing Public Works Director, Jim Pearson. As I briefly mentioned at the beginning of the last meeting, this will be Jim's last town meeting and last session of the town meeting. And just want to point out that I think it's fitting, as much as we did for Betty Delaney a year ago at her last town meeting, that we recognize Jim at this time. Jim was hired as our Town Engineer on September 24, 1984, and then was promoted as the town's first Director of Public Works in October of 1989. And Jim's been the best Director of Public Works the town has ever had. And so, obviously, Jim has served the community for, obviously, 28 years. And on behalf of the community, I'd just like Jim to come up and receive this token of appreciation on behalf of the town of Chelmsford. What it is, it's a desk clock with barometer and thermometer. And why this is fitting for Jim is this will make sure Jim has acceptable weather conditions for his golf game.
Now, Mr. Manager, allow me a point of personal privilege. The town clerk says that you can keep your lanyards for being so good on Monday night. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I'd like to return back to the microphone, Pat Maloney, who's the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee, to present the presentation on Article 12 pertaining to the ongoing renovation and rehabilitation of the Alpha Road facility into a public works facility.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Maloney. I'm co-chairman of the Permanent Building Committee. We're here this evening seeking additional funding for the next phase of the Department of Public Works building on 9 Alpha Road. A recap of funding thus far. We had the initial debt exclusion of $5 million. We were back last spring seeking some money from the Mousier Fund to help towards their build-out, and we've obtained $350,000 in Chapter 90 funds due engineering. So this is what we've done so far with that funding. We purchased the building on Alpha Road for $2.75 million. We've completed due diligence and administrative fees throughout the purchase of that and through the regulatory process. We've recently contracted to replace the roof for $830,000. The balance of that is the architectural fees behind that. We've had architectural and engineering fees of $428,000. Interior office demolition, so that we can open things up and see if there's any surprises ahead of time before we complete design of $25,000. And the Phase 1 site work, which is all the drainage, paving, curbing, all the work required through the regulatory boards, the Conservation Commission, and planning. So that's how we've expensed the funds thus far. We've expensed $5.1 million. The funds remaining from the initial appropriations is $1.4 million. Some of the things that we've done thus far, you can see the large installation of the stormwater management systems, and you can see the large piping and everything underground, the retaining walls for the new driveway, and the retention ponds, as well as final grading in preparation of the paving. We're very fortunate to have a tremendous winter, as everybody knows, so we're way ahead of schedule on this work and proved very fruitful for us. Going on, we started paving about two weeks ago. That's pretty much a completed process at this point. We have a little bit more finished paving to do. That'll be done over the next few weeks. We expect to be complete with the site work project in about one month. Again, some pictures of some of the things going on today. These are very recent, from last week, so you can see the completion of the retaining walls, some of the grading, the guardrails in, and you can see the dumpster on the side of the building for the roof project that's ongoing, that we expect to complete in about six weeks as well. So you'll recall that we had $1.4 million left over from the initial funding. We'd like to move into a Phase 2 renovation and upgrade project that would include the administrative and employee facilities, vehicle storage, general building upgrades, workshop renovations, salt storage shed, and a contingency that goes along with that. The total cost of that project would be about $3.1 million, leaving us with a current deficit to complete that Phase 2 renovation of about $1.7 million. So that would be the funding that we're looking for this evening. What that Phase 2 project would entail is the following. You can see in the lower right that it would be the build-out of all the office employee and employee facility areas. So this would include the offices for all the managers, open cubicle space, shower facilities, day rooms, that type of thing. The area in blue would be the shop renovations. That's where the sewer department might work on pumps in one shop. We'd have parks and recreation in another shop. The mechanics in sign shop might have an individual area of their own. This would also include all the floor drain improvements and ventilation for parking the vehicles inside. You can see the new door openings, which are the small blocks that proceed all the way through the building. That would be a traffic flow from left to right for all the vehicles. So that's where the vehicles would be stored and how they would move through the building. We'd like to get all those openings complete so that we can get all the equipment finally in the shops. The area on the lower left is not part of Phase 2. That's all the mechanic's bays, which would house at some point in the future the fluid dispensing areas, the lifts for working on the vehicles, and so on. So that part of the work is not included in this Phase 2 project, but want to mention that that would be a future phase. Also in the Phase 2 renovations, this, what you're seeing in the gray is the paving that's completed as of today. You can see the existing building. Phase 2 would be installing the new salt shed on the site, as well as just finishing up a few projects with some paving. So that would finish it up. I want to point out that the area above where it says employee parking and to the left of the grade-out area, that's the areas that the future wash bay and fuel islands would be. Again, that's not part of this phase, but I'll go on to explain what that all means to us. Quick view of what the salt shed would look like out back. So what we've tried to do with this project, as we've gone through, if we were fortunate to get the funding tonight, that would bring us up to about $8 million expended on this project thus far. What we've tried to do with the rest of the phases, and these are in no particular order, is we've tried to break it down and position the project so that if you couldn't get the funding to do the entire remainder of the project, you could break it down into components and possibly do it with some capital funding or something like that. So we've broken it into five different phases that you could look at to complete the project. Certainly, you could take all five phases and combine it into one final, one complete project, but we did want to position it so we had some choices going forward with the funding. So these are in no particular order, but one phase would be final site development. That would include all the material storage bins, top course pavement, material storage areas, salt shed perimeter paving out behind the salt shed. Next phase could be vehicle maintenance for $1.3 million. That would be the maintenance bays, the fluid distribution rooms, parts rooms, and a mezzanine for part storage. Wash bay at $1.1 million would be the wash building, the equipment for that building, the final utility connections, and some paving. And the final two phases would be a fueling system with the above-ground storage tanks and final office renovations for additional conference space and training rooms that we would not build out under this phase. So you can see how we could break that into five different phases and gives us some options on funding going forward. So if you look at the Phase 1 cost of $5.1 million that we've expensed so far with this funding, we would go into a Phase 2 project of $3.1 million. And then you see the remaining five different phases, of which I spoke. And again, that could be combined into one project, or you could break it down and do it some other way. Total being at $13.1 million for completion of the DPW project. We projected that back in 2009 when we went for initial funding and failed. We had a, pretty much, a $13 million project at that point. And so we're maintaining that budget that we set back when, and we see that we can do that if we move forward in, whether we do a full project or butt it off a little bit at a time. It's important to keep moving forward so that that $13.1 does not increase. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, we're now in a question-and-answer period, and you can use either microphone. And the questions must be seeking factual information.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. Would you ask, Pat, with the completion of Phase 2, how much of DPW will be relocated to this location, and how much of DPW will remain off-site?
With this Phase 2 completion, we would be moving engineering out of town offices, the sewer department out of town offices, parks and recreation would go down from out at the garage out in West Chelmsford. We would also be bringing everybody from Richardson Road, with the exception of the maintenance base.
Next question.
So Richardson Road will remain DPW for the foreseeable future?
Until we go and complete the vehicle maintenance portion of the project, some point in the future, we would keep that building open to repair vehicles up at that function, as well as the fact that there's five years of sand approximately left to mine on that site, and that's a very valuable asset to the town. So there would be ongoing sand mining operations for about another five years, and I think that's worth several hundred thousand a year to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. It seems to me that the $13 million figure is the figure that was originally defeated by an exemption vote. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, it was 12.9 something. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so...
You got your answer.
Yep, I voted for this.
No, that's debate, Bob. Gonna ask a question.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question.
First.
I voted for the question, but I was under the impression that this was all gonna be done through exempted votes, so why are we coming in this way?
Let the town manager answer that.
My question. So if I had to say, and the question is, is why are we funding it without a debt exemption?
Right.
The answer is, is that whenever possible, we'll try to fund capital projects without a debt exemption in order to basically mitigate any impact on the tax rate. At this point in time, in the five years that I've been here as town manager, I brought the town stabilization fund from $1.7 million, which was only 1.8% of our budget back in fiscal year 2007, to $7.9 million, which is now 7.6% of our budget. And there's a significant difference in reason for that, because basically, the town's financial policies, as recognized by bonding agencies, as well as sound financial management practices, indicates that a municipality's cash reserve should be between 5 and 10% of the town's holdings. We're now at the midpoint of that, at 7.6%. By funding this project, if you go back to the motion, you'll see how we're funding this work. We're asking for just over $1.7 million, of which $1.5 million would be transferred from the stabilization fund, general stabilization fund. And then the balance is the unexpended proceeds from the two school projects, the high school windows and the buy-in school roof. The reason that I'm comfortable doing this and basically taking the $1.7 million from our stabilization fund is the fact of where the fund is at, but more importantly, we anticipate, the financial team, myself, the town accountant, and finance director, we anticipate they will return over $2 million to the free cash and stabilization fund at the end of this fiscal year, which mean that we would continue our growth of our stabilization fund to a point where we'd go probably from 7.6% probably to 7.8% or so by a few hundred thousand dollars. And again, that keeps us in that comfort range of the midpoint of our practice. And I would anticipate going in the future that if circumstances would allow, the community, we would evaluate whether to do additional phases of this project or other capital needs, such as at the school facilities, with our cash reserves, rather than increasing the amount of debt issued by the community.
Next. Please ask the question to the moderator.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, last town meeting, we talked about a deficit of $7.5 million in employee health care for retirees. Are we not, we're not planning to ever fund that. We're using $1.7 million here that we might put into a fund. That last town meeting, we only put $250,000 towards that $7.5 million deficit. Imagine it's higher now. Wouldn't you rather use this money towards that?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The $7 million figure is our annual deficit. So that's not an aggregate, that's the annual amount. I believe our aggregate deficit is several times that amount. So, Brian, the reality being is we're ahead of most communities in even having a stabilization fund. We anticipate this fall, we'll put more into that fund, but we could not incur $7 million annually to incur that liability. So that's the reason for it, is I'm dealing with the here and now and slowly trying to address that other issue, which is a recognizable obligation in the future. And I think, as I think when we discussed this in the fall, when we set up the fund, as we're paying off our unfunded pension obligation, I think we'll then transition towards paying off the unfunded retiree benefit obligation.
Okay. And second question is an environmental question. Could you flip to the screen that shows the layout with the green overlay? It was a line art drawing. That one. The green area is wetlands. In fact, the one in the, kind of, the center circle is arguably a pond. The salt shed up above, how do we keep the salt out of that wetlands? And I think that's kind of the headwaters to the River Neck Road water supply. First question. Second part of the question is, that huge parking lot there drains into, looked like a pretty technical water filtration system. We keep the oil from the parking lot in big old trucks? We talked about 10-year-old trucks, the drip oil. How do we keep the water out of that wetlands and out of my drinking water? So, salt and oil.
Two-part question. One was the sand and salt structure. The entire area contributory to the wetland is paved and curbed, and all the drainage is collected in deep-sump catch basins. And before it even gets to a detention basin, it goes through what they call an OGT, an oil and gas trap. So that takes care of the floatables, the oils and the greases. And the second...
Salt?
Part of the question. Again, everything is collected, is treated. We've met with the—before this whole project was permitted, we met with the Center Water District and the East Water District. We'll also be installing three groundwater monitoring wells, one upstream and two downstream at the locations selected by the Center Water District's engineering consultant, Stantec. So, we have a track line, so to speak, of the before construction, after construction. And we agreed to sample those test walls on a schedule as recommended by the Water District.
And one more question, Mr. Moderator.
Is it a follow-up?
It's a question of the building itself.
You have to go to the end of the line.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. The roof of the building, was that a surprise, $800,000,000, or was that an expected amount? And I recall the solar array plan that we had that we might put one on there and then we decided not to. Was that a surprise?
As it turned out, as far as the solar array, the building based upon when it was built did not have heavy enough loading capacity to accept the solar farm on top of the building. So, that's why that didn't quite work out. But now, we went into this pretty much realizing that we needed a new roof for the building. It was represented as it had a new roof, but it was—it was not a proper installation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Two questions.
Mark Dolat, Precinct Seven. Mark Dolat, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, during the presentation, they stated that there were gonna be people from the town offices of the town hall that were gonna be relocating to this facility. How many of those were factored into the fire station build-out?
How many of the—
People relocating from town hall would then be displaced to make room for the fire station.
Not sure how to answer that. We knew that when we, you know, moved on with this building, that those would be the groups moving out, but—
But if we don't vote yes on this, can those people still move to that facility?
We would probably look at doing much less of a building project with the 1.4 million that we have remaining and at least get those people moved down there.
And so, you can't move them over still?
Well, it's not an efficient way to do things at that point when you have contractors and such in the building. And you might as well get all the groups in there and function in under one roof as it's intended to be. And if it appears as though we have the wherewithal to do that, it seems to make sense. You know, breaking it down into even the five phases that I spoke of earlier, there comes a certain price tag with that, but it at least gives you some options. So, I mean, that's certainly another option. But again, you know, I would caution against that just because of added costs in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a recommending—you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. I am also—oh, Peggy Dunn, Precinct One. I'm also concerned with the salt shed because of the corrosiveness of that material and getting into the water system. I did not hear—
With all due respect, can you ask a question and you can save the rest for debate?
I am only trying to say, I did not hear—
Okay.
—what Mr. Pearson said, and would he repeat it for me? Is that a question?
Not really, but you can answer it.
Will you repeat what you said was mitigating—
That's a question.
Okay. What would be the mitigating circumstances for this salt shed?
Sure. All the runoff from the site is collected, contained by paved surfaces and granite curbing. And it's collected in catch basins through deep sumps that collect the settleables. And then it leads to the catch basins to oil and grease tank separators. It leaves those facilities and goes to above-ground detention basins. It leaves those facilities and goes to the wetland. And this is all submitted and approved by the Conservation Commission in accordance with DEP stormwater guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 12.
And now, we're in a discussion phase. And please use the appropriate mic.
Bob Joyce, Precinct One. I figured I'd get in line first tonight seeing that I didn't get to speak the other night. Yeah, I know, you all feel sorry for me, right? Funny.
Please get to the point.
Anyway, I'm opposed to this. And the reason I'm opposed to it is because we are taking money out of the stabilization fund that we've built up over the years. And I understand that they're anticipating that $2 million, at least $2 million is going to be returned in the fall. But I think it's time that town meeting members and selectmen and the administration start thinking about our taxes. And if you look at the fact that we cut our health benefit—health cost by $1.4 million, we got a $300,000 return from the state doing an adjustment which went towards capital instead of going back into the free cash and stabilization. And we've just funded $634,000 a year for a fire station. And this could amount to a very, very sizable tax reduction. And over the past five years probably, our taxes, while I understand Paul's comment about—the manager's comment about the fact that we are allowed to raise the levy 2.5 percent every year, we don't have to. And I think the time has come for us to look at reducing taxes. Let's take some of the money from the stabilization fund and return it back to the taxpayers. Next year, when health insurance goes up $200,000, we're gonna have to pay that and it's gonna come out of our taxes again. So, we paid for it once, then they used the savings, and then we paid for it a second time. I think it's time we really look at cutting taxes using our stabilization. And from the time that I can remember when I was a member of the Board of Selectmen and a previous manager was here, I always said that free cash was a result of over-budgeting, underspending and unexpected money that you may have gotten. That money really should go into stabilization and eventually be applied toward our tax rate. We cannot go any further in raising our taxes. I came from a very, very nice town of Winchester. And when I was 20 years old, I couldn't live in that town any longer. And that's part of the reason. What we're doing is we're pricing our kids out of this town because the taxes are going up every year. And 2.5 percent a year is 10 percent in four years, plus if you build in the compounding. So, I think if they want to do these kinds of projects, then we ought to get exempted debt. Now, I understand that that makes your taxes go up, but by the same token, people will make a decision on it. When we first had this proposal for $13 million, people turned it down. And they probably turned it down for the price. And now, we're gonna spend $13 million. And I shudder to think that over the next five years, where we're gonna get that money? Is it gonna come out of stabilization every year? I think it's time we start giving back to the taxpayers.
This is probably gonna be redundant, but I just want to be clear about this. When we started this project, there is no option here. This project has to get finished, correct?
I would have thought that when everybody moved forward to secure the asset with the original $5 million appropriation, that they understood that this would go forward to a completion of about a $13 million project, yes.
Right. I just wanted to clarify—
But let me just say also that when we initially looked at other options, we were looking at options that were like $27 million. And the tunnel Lexington just completed their facility, which we'll be comparable to in size and availability for storage and all that type of thing. I mean, they just spent $28 million. So, we could have been looking at that if this opportunity wasn't afforded to us. So, we understood that—I would think that everybody understood that the theory was when you bought into the $5 million funding appropriation, that we would be ultimately having a $13 million project.
Right. I guess that—I'm just a little confused why we would begin a project if—or why town meeting would vote for the project in the first place if they didn't understand the full impact of the needs that would be coming up in the future.
Correct.
So, why start a project if we're not gonna intend on finishing it? This work has to be done and we are eventually going to have to finish this project. And while the cost's right and the time is right and we can do this, why not do it?
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. Mr. Moderator, I think everybody knows how they're gonna vote on this article, but I just want to point out a few simple facts. We've had the town manager explain that he anticipates there to be sufficient free cash to replace what's being asked for under this particular article. And if you looked at the book that we received in the fall, you would have noticed some very interesting bar graphs. Under the previous town manager, the stabilization fund was going off a cliff, down, 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 over the course of the years, and something changed. A new town moderator—a new town manager came in, new town moderator too, but a new town manager came in that put a different kind of set of fiscal responsibility into the town. And shortly after he got here, the stabilization fund was going up, up, up and up to the $7.6 or $7 million that it's in right now. The change is dramatic. So, when the town manager says that he believes that the money will be there to replace what we're being asked for here, I believe him. We also heard the previous speaker say that he wants to lower taxes but pay for this through a debt exemption. I'm confused. If you have—if you have an exemption, our taxes go back up. So, you can't take this money and save taxes but go and raise taxes and get the money back again and call it saving taxes. That makes no sense. So, you know, I think the money should be expended to this because the one thing that we haven't discussed at all is we have a North Chalford Water District water supply at risk on Richardson Road. Now, if you're talking about what's good for the children, let's have water that's at risk and let this thing languish for a few years while it remains that way. That makes no sense. So, I ask the town meeting to support this. I believe the town manager's fiscal controls and understanding are in place and that the money will be returned to the stabilization fund.
Okay, seeing no one queued up at the mic, we will vote. Now, I will reiterate, use the numbered keys. When you look for your name, the screen will show names in alphabetical order by last name. Is that correct? And a little clock will count down from 35 to zero. The screen, you'll have two opportunities to find your name. The last number, one, two, or three, that you press when it hits zero is your vote. Start voting. And aim for the antenna. You can stand up if you want. Ted, do you have the two-thirds calculation? Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, please, if I could. I ask your indulgence, only because this just happened on a vote. Could you please take just a second again to remind the audience of the time limit and the fact that it's scrolling so that you can see your vote? There was some confusion. People were waiting for the appearance of their name and they weren't aware of the time limit.
Okay, I will explain. You can vote immediately when I tell you to start voting. You don't have to wait for your name to appear on the screen. But you will have two opportunities to see your name and your vote.
Mr. Moderator, we have a—Ted Lutter has a concern on this last vote. We apparently have a—Bernie, Deb would come up here. We apparently have someone who has a mistakenly issued clicker. If they could look at the others and see number 23. Whoever has number 23—there it is, gentleman in the back of the room. We need—okay. If we could just—
Mr. Manager, could you explain that again?
What's that?
Explain that again.
Basically, someone was—someone acquired an incorrect remote. And so, they're resolving that right now. Is that—you all said, Bernie, has that all been corrected? Okay. So, I don't know if you want to redo the vote on—
Yes, let's redo the vote because I'll read the motion.
I didn't expect anything from Paul in the town tonight. I had a nice ovation the other night, so we're fine time. Thank you very much to Paul and the staff for that. I truly enjoyed my time here and my family. Wonderful opportunity and wonderful career. So, thank you, everybody.
Okay, we're gonna do the vote again. I'll read the motion. I'll summarize it. Town manager, Paul Cohen moves that $1,719,443.35 be appropriated to fund the design and development and reconstruction of the Department of Public Works facility. The town will transfer $1.5 million in a general stabilization fund. Town will transfer $109,095.29 from unexpended bond proceeds. And the town will transfer $110,348.06 from unaccepted bond proceeds under Article Seven. The previous one was under Article Six. Okay? So, now, we're gonna vote again. That's the antenna, right at that table. So, if you have to stand up, stand up. And press one for yes, two— And press one for yes, two for no, three to abstain. Voting is over, and the article passes. You want the numbers? They should be on there. Yes is one twenty-four, no is sixteen, zero abstentions. Under Article thirteen, Town Manager, Paul Cohen moves that the town transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the sale of graves and lots to the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is, it's occurring at every spring annual town meeting when we do the budget. This is basically transferring twenty-five thousand dollars for the perpetual care funds that go when people purchase graves from the cemetery division to provide for that care, for the ongoing care for those grave lots. This is the same balance that we appropriate annually and is obviously therefore in effect for this current fiscal year.
Any questions? Seeing none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article thirteen.
Andy Seligge, Precinct Seven. Well, I'm sure this will be approved. I'll just take a half minute of your time to point out, a year and a half ago, my son died, drowned in that lake over there, and the way the Cemetery Commission took care of me and my wife in picking a lot was just outstanding. It was just wonderful, and I, I'm so, I was so impressed. And how they're taking care of the property since then is also very, very good, and I want to thank them for that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further debate? Okay, you all know how to vote.
Mr. Moderator, we have a similar situation. Your remote number changes at every town meeting depending upon changement of town meeting bodies. What was happening is people are going in and requesting a specific number remote, and therefore it was being issued to them. So obviously, we have a miscommunication with the tell-in clerks, but the understanding is, is when you, when you check in to town meeting, they will issue you the remote number. Your remote number will stay generally within a session of town meeting, but for example, if you had remote number thirty-eight last fall, it may not be thirty-eight this year because of the change in alphabetical order of the town member meeting precincts. So we've just heard of a second instance of this occurring this evening. And so, again, if anyone else has a question about their vote, you've, again, you're not assigned a perpetual number on your clicker. Each meeting, you're assigned a clicker, a remote device, based on where your name is listed alphabetically, because obviously, we're updating the rosters between meetings.
Thank you.
If you could just pause one minute, and Ted will correct this.
Mike Gomes, Precinct Six. So how are we detecting this problem? And how do we not know it's much more widespread?
Because a person, your results are displayed on the screen. If what you voted on the screen isn't what you voted, then you raise a point of information and inform the moderator. That just happened a second time here with the second voter, who says, wait a minute, my vote's not being recorded, or it's not as I voted. There is no problem with the electronic voting communication equipment. The problem was in the distribution of the devices, because mistakenly, the tellers were honoring a request when somebody said, well, my clicker is number thirty-eight. No, and I think we'll correct this at future town meetings. But the key thing is, you're not assigned a perpetual number. You're assigned a remote at each meeting based on the alphabetical listing of the membership in order, so.
So it seems to me, Mr. Moderator, we need to make sure that we run a slide, an extra loop at least, to make sure everybody reads their result and make sure they're the right, the right name.
It's alphabetical by last name. I think two loops should be sufficient.
Wasn't until this last one. Thanks.
It was, because a person discovered it. How many people here asked for a certain number? Looks like the problem is solved. Okay, we're going to vote on this. Paul, our town manager, moves that the town transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the sale of graves. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer. If you vote no, you're voting against it. If you abstain, you abstain. This is a majority vote. Article passes. It's one hundred and forty to zero, no, and zero abstain. Moving to Article fourteen. Town Manager moves that the town raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to fund the Community Action Program established under Article twelve of the April twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-six Spring Annual Town Meeting. The purpose of this program shall be to provide matching funds for community improvement projects undertaken by individuals and/or organizations within the town of Chelmsford. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this, this really are community benefit projects that are funded by awarding cash grants from the Community Action Program Committee. Again, this program has been around since nineteen ninety-seven, has funded over sixty projects to date totaling over sixty-six thousand dollars at places such as Harmony Park, Varney Playground, and a number of Eagle Scout projects. And so, the last time the town meeting appropriated to this fund was ten thousand dollars back in fiscal year two thousand nine, and again, we're at a point where we need an additional appropriation this evening to continue future projects. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions? Seeing none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen, a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay, we're in the debate portion. Any debate? Seeing no debate, we are voting that the town raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to fund the Community Action Program. If you vote yes, you're voting for the town to raise the money. If you vote no, you're voting for the town not to raise the money. This is a majority vote. Article passes, one forty-two to zero, and zero abstentions. Article fifteen.
I move that we waive the reading of Article fifteen.
Motion to waive the reading on Article fifteen. All in favor, raise your tickets. Opposed? Reading is waived. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under this article, I, as town manager, with the support of the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, are requesting that we transfer eleven town-owned parcels from undesigned use to permanent conservation protection. And this would basically put an additional thirty-one point six five acres into permanent conservation protection. Those of you who've been following town meeting, this would basically be the fourth in town meeting where we put such parcels into conservation. And this really arose out of the master planning process and the revision of the open space and recreation plan in two thousand and ten. We reviewed all the town-owned parcels, and in the fall of two thousand and ten, we did a clarifying article because we discovered that parcels back in nineteen seventy-four were not formally put into conservation. And then at the spring two thousand and eleven town meeting, a year ago, under Article seventeen, we put in fifteen parcels totaling fifty-eight point four two acres. Six months ago, in the fall of two thousand and eleven, under Article ten, we put an additional thirty parcels totaling forty-eight point three seven acres. And tonight, we're basically taking the final piece of eleven parcels totaling thirty-one point six five acres, and I'll just quickly walk through them. Here, there's two parcels. One, you can see by Freeman Lake, off of Shore Drive and Mallory Street. The next one is off of Parkhurst Road. The following two parcels are at the end of Arlington and Evergreen Street. The next parcel's at the end of Crabapple Lane. The next parcel's off of Hunt Road. The next two parcels are off of Mill Road. And then the penultimate one is off of Country Club Drive, adjacent to the golf course. And then the final one is a six point four acre parcel at the Westford Town Line. As you can imagine, most of these parcels are wet. They were acquired generally for non-payment of taxes. Some of these going back, what, really, some go back to nineteen sixty-eight, others into two thousands, and so forth. And what this does is this would place these parcels into conservation protection. Again, with these actions, as well as other actions, such as the acquirement of the Lewis Farm property, now known as Sunny Meadow Farm, the town will have, has already designated the two hundred acres of protected open spaceland in the last four years. And our open spaceland now accounts for eight point one percent of the town's total land area. And again, this would put in an additional thirty acres or so into permanent protection. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
We're in a question and answer period. Any questions? Seeing none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Board of Selectmen, a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Now, we're in a debate section. Seeing no one queued up at the microphones, we're going to go to a vote. If you vote for this, all of this land that was described goes into conservation. And this requires a two-thirds vote. If you vote yes, the land goes in conservation. If you vote no, it doesn't. So get your little clickers out, aim for the antenna, and get ready. The article passes, motion passes, and it's one forty-two to zero, unanimous. Article sixteen, Town Manager?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of Article sixteen.
Motion made to waive the reading of Article sixteen. All those in favor, please raise their tickets. All those opposed? The reading is waived. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The intent of this article, it really is to enhance the maintenance and quality of life in the town by formally establishing a policy for the care and longevity of trees in the community. As we know, twice now in the last, just over three years, we've suffered significant tree damage as a result of nature. And also, we've been approached in the last few months by Girl Scouts and others inquiring, well, why isn't the town of Chelmsford a tree city? And what is the town's commitment to the care and ongoing maintenance of trees? And that's what this bylaw establishes, by formally reducing to writing the fact that we will go on record as establishing a policy that there'll be a planned program of replacement on a one-for-one basis, any and all shade trees removed due to disease, death, public nuisance, construction, or safety. And that, with the provision, though, that if it's suitable, it would be, a tree that is removed could be replanted at an alternate location at the discretion of the tree warden if necessary. We also would establish a tree committee of volunteer residents in the community, who, again, would administer a comprehensive tree management program to guide the town. And such tree committee would be a five-member committee appointed by the town manager and confirmed by the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Are there any questions?
Clint Janop, Precinct Seven. Where are we funding this from?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. There is no funding in this article. This is a bylaw article. However, if one goes back and looks at the operating budget that was approved at last session, we've significantly increased our funding for the care of trees by over a hundred percent. We've gone from a twenty-five thousand dollar tree budget to a sixty-seven thousand dollar budget for the care and maintenance of trees. So basically, and what that does is that, basically, where that came from is, is we need two dollars per capita in order to qualify as a tree city, or tree community, much like the city of Lowell and some of our surrounding suburbs. So again, recognizing the fiscal constraints and the operating budget, we want to start at that threshold, and then we'll go forward in the years ahead, once the committee is up and operational.
Please address the moderator. Ask your question.
Does the designation as a tree city have any overbearing requirements that we're not hearing about tonight?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. There is no constraints by, it's a recognition. There are no compelling requirements if a community is designated a tree city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
George Ripsum, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, several years ago, like twenty, we eliminated the position of tree warden. Are we now reinstating that with pay, or is this going to be taken out of hide?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The town has not eliminated the tree warden. Jim Pearson, who has served as tree warden for the community, and in fact, it was just but, it was yesterday, right? Tuesday, Tuesday, we had a tree hearing in the town hall regarding tree removal on Brook Street, having to do with some sidewalk improvements on Brook Street. So no, we will continue to have a tree warden in the community. Likely, it will be an employee, an official of the town, in order, you know, in order to fulfill those responsibilities.
Thank you.
Bob Joyce, Precinct One. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I noticed that in the write-up, it's tied to the building of houses and development. Is there any, anything in here that would require that the power companies, who do a lot of taking down of trees in town, would have to adhere to this? Or do we need to amend something in the future? How is that handled?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The issue of tree planting and obligations of development currently exist in the town's bylaws. What we've done is we've left that language in the bylaws, and we've added the additional language that I spoke of earlier pertaining to formal replacement policy, as well as a tree committee, and so... a tree committee, and so forth. With respect to utilities, we cannot infringe upon those rights of utilities, which are established under state law, which allows them to clear around trees in order to maintain the integrity of the grid system. So this bylaw does not inhibit or in any way restrict that, because we're not allowed to do that under state law.
Mr. Moderator, I understand what you're saying about state law, but is there something that covers us if they not trim it, but take the whole tree down?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not aware that we have any authority under state law to compel a utility to replace a tree. And in fact, a town council is sitting there affirming my understanding under the statute, we do not have that authority to make such an effort on the utilities. However, I think what we can say, I think in the spirit of this law, is when a tree is removed, we're obviously aware of that, the utilities do notify the town. And when appropriate, we would look to replace trees as appropriate in certain circumstances. Again, if not in that particular location, in a suitable location, in a particular neighborhood.
Mary Ann Pareski, Precinct 6. Mr. Moderator, I was wondering if this tree committee was responsible for finding out, studying the invasion of Oriental Bittersweet that is destroying many, many trees in Chelmsford, and if they would offer suggestions for how homeowners and people that own property can eliminate this from their destroying trees.
Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Tree committee has not been established. I think the suggestion has been heard, and it's one of the things that we can suggest to the committee once they're appointed and operational. Yes.
Yes. Was this the discussion about Oriental Bittersweet on the long-term plan?
We do not, through you, Mr. Moderator, we do not have a plan in place at this point in time. We're seeking this action to have a bylaw, establish the committee, and then develop a plan. So again, we would look to do that once the committee is operational.
All right. Thank you.
Next.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. To the previous speaker, Ms. Pareski should realize or know that the town's conservation agent is very knowledgeable on invasive species in the town of Chelmsford, and any resident that wants to know how to address that problem on their property should call the conservation agent to do that. And I have one question. Right now, we have a town nursery at Sunny Meadows, of which is charged to grow trees to be replaced on public property. Will that town nursery go under the jurisdiction of this committee?
Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I would think that we would work with the committee for the enhancement of the nursery. I haven't really given it any thought as to whether we would actually take the responsibility under the committee. I think that's something we could work out with the Chelmsford Open Space stewards in terms of the care and development of tree nursery in the town, at that location and perhaps at other locations.
Came from the green microphone.
Karen Deednado, Precinct 8. My question is, is any of the funding that this committee is going to have access to, are they going to be dealing with any of the damaged trees in town? Or is it mostly the planting of new? I'm asking because there's still a ton of branches still hanging off many trees in the town. And as I'm driving under them, I'm just waiting to see if one comes crashing down onto a car, which could not only cause a lot of damage, but to harm to the people driving.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I would ask any resident, those in the hall or watching this evening or otherwise, to notify the town if there is such trees and hangers. We did a pretty extensive cleanup through Public Works with the Mass General Emergency Management Agency to address those concerns. But to answer the general question is, yes, it would not only be the planting of new trees, it would also be for the care of existing trees.
Thank you.
Mike Combs, Precinct 6. My question is, what's the role of the Board of Selectmen in the appointment of committee members to the tree committee?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. As is generally the custom in the community, the Town Manager would nominate, the Board of Selectmen would confirm any and all appointments.
Thank you.
Jerry Low, Precinct 9. Through the moderator. I'm just wondering, does the town have a policy presently for trees removed due to town construction? Specifically, example is Bill Ricker Road by CVS, where they cut down several old trees for the widening of the road, and none of them have been replaced, and it's been two or three years.
I'll ask our tree warden, Jim Pearson, to speak to that project, because it is an active project that's underway as we speak.
The other CVS.
The other one? Oh, at the other side.
Sure. The project on Chelmsford Street along CVS.
On Bill Ricker Road. By Stop &amp; Shop.
No, it's Boston. Boston.
Boston Road, sorry. I didn't even know about that.
Okay, the CVS on...
I live here.
So do I. The CVS on Boston Road across from the library.
Yeah.
The brand-new one. Sure.
About 10 trees were taken down.
Yes. And you'll see, as that project moves forward, they'll not only plant new trees, but they're going to rebuild that sidewalk. We left that gap out because we knew something was going to happen at that site. So the sidewalk will be replaced, and there'll be new street trees planted along that right-of-way.
So is it a general policy, though, of the town?
It is an existing policy, yes. When we cut one down, we try to plant one in the same locale or close to it, and if not, then someplace else.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Nancy Donahue, Precinct 9. I'm just curious if this applies to private property or public property? For instance, if you have a diseased tree on your property, do you need permission to remove it?
This only deals with public shade trees, not private property.
Even if you are situated on an historic road?
If the tree is on private property, this does not apply.
Thank you.
Next.
Janet Dubner, Precinct 6. The private property question on Section 161-6, willow trees, that within 30 days, if a willow tree is found to be within 50 feet of a drainage, is there any provision if people can't afford to move the tree? To remove, to have the tree removed? This is written that it has to be removed, it seems, within 30 days of notice. Is there any provision for people who might not be able to afford to have a large tree removed?
There is no provision that the bylaw is written as it is. That's the bylaw that is in effect today, it's been in effect for over 30 years.
And it's never been an issue?
We've always worked with homeowners.
Okay.
It's never really been a contentious issue, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in debate now.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. I don't think this is a big debatable question, but I would just like the body to know that over the years, the Conservation Commission has been charged with forestry management of conservation land. We found it very difficult to do that through a lack of resources, primarily manpower. And the creation of this committee, I think, will go a long way to help us have good, solid forestry management programs in conservation land.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask a question of the Town Manager regarding the tree warden. Can we pretty much be assured that the tree warden position will not cost the town any money, because it will be a public employee already, as opposed to perhaps a stipend person that could end up retiring or getting health insurance after doing the position for like 10 years or something?
Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I don't envision any scenario in which we would ever have a tree warden with benefits. We don't think that such a position would warrant over 20 hours per week in the community. As I noted earlier, it is wrapped up in existing, in this case, the Public Works Director, Town Engineer, Public Works Director position. It's an annual appointment, in this case, of appointment of a tree warden. I don't anticipate it changing, but I could see a circumstance that if there was a particular resident that had expertise, that the community may be well-served to appoint such an individual, either on a voluntary basis or with nominal compensation for costs incurred in doing that type of work. But this bylaw doesn't address that, nor does the current status of the general statute of Mass General laws put any constraints on the appointment of a tree warden.
Okay, so my concern is that we strip the Selectmen of their stipends, because it incurred cost to the town of health insurance and such. I would hate to add another position that could possibly cost the town unexpected expenses.
I don't know if that's a question, Mr. Moderator. I mean, we're not changing anything with the tree warden.
We're in debate section, so he doesn't have to ask a question. No one else coming up for debate? Okay, if you vote on Article 16, you're giving the town, you're moving that the town amend Chapter 161 trees of the Code of Chelmsford. By deleting the current sections 161-1 and 161-2 in their entirety, I won't read it and replace it with 161-1-2-3-4-5 and -6. All in favor of this motion? Start voting. The article passes. 132 yes, 7 no, and 7 abstentions. I'm sorry, 2 abstentions. And it passed by a majority vote. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of Article 17.
Motion is made to waive the reading of Article 17. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those opposed? The reading is waived.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to welcome to the podium Bob Joyce, a member of the Community Preservation... I'm sorry, Bob Morris. Bob's always on my mind. Bob Morris, the member of the Community Preservation Committee, who will present the next few articles regarding the Community Preservation Fund.
Thank you. Bob Morris, co-chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and Bob Joyce was a member of the Community Preservation Committee for the last year, so the mistake is understandable. Article 17 is our annual budget. The Community Preservation Fund is created through a 1.5% surcharge on the property tax after $100,000 deduction from the value of the property. This ends up being about a, on the average, about a $55 surcharge on the typical property in Chelmsford. There are low-income and senior moderate income exemptions can be applied for through the Assessors' Office. And for 2011, for a senior family of two, the level of income required, the maximum level would be $73,360 for senior family of two, and for a low-income family of four, the same amount, $73,360. So for fiscal year 2013, the anticipated tax surcharge is predicted to be, bring in $840,000 through the surcharge, and the state matching, which will arrive in October, should be $205,000, which has now dropped to about 25% of the total surcharge collected. There is a Senate bill pending, House bill, a bill pending, House Bill 765, which has recently received a lot of forward motion and was voted unanimously by the House to create additional funding for community preservation. So if that passes through the Senate and is signed by the governor, that will help the surcharge and create some more uses for community preservation. So we have set-asides that are required by the Act each year to put aside 10% minimum for the open space, community housing, and historic funds. And we're also allowed to allocate up to 5% for administrative uses, and we're putting aside $50,000 for administrative, for appraisals, surveys, studies, plans, and the like. Article 17 also has our bond payments, and our bond payment for the town hall, for both town hall projects. We had borrowed approximately half of it for a $2.8 million total bond. And for fiscal year 2013, it's $380,800. The bond goes out to the year 2021, will be paid off for a 10-year bond. We're also making our final payment on the Lewis Farm bond. So five years, and we're done. So Article 17 will have the $154,875. Did I press something wrong? Okay, thanks. This is the various accounts, balances that are projected to have at the end of fiscal year 2013. The open space account gets zeroed out by the final payment for the Lewis Farm. Community housing gets increased, it's going to have the $104,500 added to it for a total of $206,500. The historic preservation count gets zeroed out by the town hall payments. And then our big account, besides the 10% set-aside, 70% remaining, what's not used for town meeting articles, goes into reserve for expenditures, and that should reach about $1.4 million at the end of fiscal year 2013, so at the end of the fiscal year, notwithstanding other warrant articles at October town meeting. That's it.
Recommendations? Fincom? Oh, you have a question?
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. There's a reserve for expenditures not committed to a specific account of $1,004,000, and in the Finance Committee report, that's projected to grow over the next five to 10 years to as much as $3 to $4 million. We raised the assessment once, I think, in the history since we've had CPC from 1% to 1.5%, something like that. My question is, is there any consideration being given to lowering that assessment back to what the original number was?
So we went from half a percent to 1.5% a number of years back. The use of the fund, it's very granular, as you can see. We had the town hall projects, a really large project, come along, and we bonded it out over 10 years. We anticipate that we're going to have open space, continued open space expenditures, where we would like to purchase additional open space and bond them out for periods of five years. So it's sort of a rolling thing. We'd like to have a large amount in the base amount, so when we come and make an open space expenditure, we don't have to bond the entire amount. We could use half of it. If it was a $1 million expenditure for open space, then we could take half of it from the reserve for expenditure and then bond out the remaining, and just move along in that sort of manner.
So the answer to my question is no. Consideration has not been given to lowering the assessment?
No, we haven't been asked, and we haven't planned for that. We'd like to continue expenditure.
The answer is no.
Yep.
Any other questions? Recommendations? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in debate now.
Claire Gennart, Precinct 7. Bob, I actually have a question in debate, sorry, sort of as a follow-on, well, or through the moderator. With the obligation that exists for the debt to be paid off on the two town hall projects, is there any action, if this body wanted to, or your committee wanted to, that could be taken, that sort of locked up that money before any additional large things were funded? In other words, could we reserve that in a more formal manner? If one wanted to?
I suppose, there's no mechanism that I know of in the Community Preservation statute to, to do that. It could be done on a, you know, more informal basis.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, if there was any movement in the community to try to decrease the amount of the future contributions to the CPC account, then it would seem that we have this debt obligation that has to be satisfied no matter what.
That's right.
And so that has to be done before anything can be really cut back in a substantial manner, I would think. Yes?
Yes, if, if the statute requires that bond obligations be met through the Community Preservation Fund, if, if town meeting voted to reduce the amount or eliminate it, it couldn't be done to the point that you couldn't make payments on that debt obligation. You have to be able to do that through the Community Preservation Fund.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone queued up for debate, so now we will go to the vote, and a yes vote would accept the Community Preservation Committee's plan for fiscal year 2013, which would appropriate, and I'm reading from the warrant book, $535,675 for debt service, $50,000 for administrative expenses, $104,500 for each of the three areas of open space, historic preservation, and community housing, and $175,000 for budgeted services. A yes vote accepts that, a no vote rejects it. Start voting. It only requires a majority vote. The article passes. 131, yea, 3 nay, 3 abstain. Article 18. Town manager Paul Cohen moves that the town appropriate $34,500 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve to fund the exterior restoration of the 1802 first schoolhouse located off Westford Street on a 1,600 square foot parcel of land adjacent to the forefathers' burial ground, identified by the Board of Assessors as Map 73, Block 320, Lot 3. Mr. Manager or Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this article, which comes from a town manager, is, would preserve the 1802 schoolhouse, which I'm sure we're all familiar with, adjacent to the forefather's burial ground, and is really a part of the town center fabric. The original schoolhouse was built on the same property, the first schoolhouse in Chelmsford in 1718, on land donated by William Fletcher. The brick used for the, to build the 1802 schoolhouse came from East Chelmsford, from an area which is now known as Brick Hill Road, and cost about $500 to build back in, in 1802. Last time it was used as a schoolhouse was in 1851. After that, it became used for the town hearse storage and other, other storage uses. It was restored in 1976 for the, the nation's bicentennial, and they expended about $10,000 for that effort. So 36 years ago, it was, it was less preserved. Roof was replaced and a number of other work was done to it. Now there's an issue where the walls are spreading, and there needs to be a proposing putting a turnbuckle inside to, to hold the exterior walls together at the front of it. Needs some brickwork, a new cedar roof, windows need to be rebuilt, shutters replaced, soffit work, and complete painting of the, of the structure, and the cost estimate is coming in at around $34,500 is the proposed amount. I also, I just wanted to thank a town meeting member who put the nice handouts out at the, the front on both the 1802 schoolhouse and the, and the canal tollhouse.
Questions?
Maria Kara-Fellis, Precinct 2, 3 of the moderator. Have we already, we haven't sent this out to bid. How did you get the preliminary dollar amount for this?
From the Gary Persicetti from the town office.
Okay, and your intention is to send this out to bid?
Yes, this will be sent out to bid, most likely with the next article also, to combine them together and try to get economy of scale.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no more questions, the Finance Committee have a recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 18.
We're in the debate section. Seeing no debate, we are voting, and this is a majority vote. Town manager moves that the town appropriate $34,500 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to fund the exterior restoration of the 1802 first schoolhouse. A yea vote is in favor of that, a no vote is against that. Start voting. Majority vote, the article passes. 140, yes, 3 no, 0 abstentions. Article 19. Town manager Paul Cohen moves that the town appropriate $17,600 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve to fund the exterior restoration of the Middlesex Canal Toll House located on a town common.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So another beautiful remnant of history that is currently located on our, our town common, the Middlesex Canal passed through all of, all of Chelmsford at, at the time, and was an important part of the, the town history. It, the canal tollhouse was not located on the town common at the time. It was located at the, the terminus of the Middlesex Canal in Middlesex Village, which is now part of Lowell, and it was built in 1832. It was donated or sold to the town in 1955 and moved to the lawn of town hall and restored it at that point by Proctor Lumber, then moved to, behind the 1802 schoolhouse in 1959, then it moved back to the lawn of town hall in 1975 and landed on the common in 1980. And it really looks correct there. It looks nice, and we hope it could stay there forever. The work it needs is exterior restoration, is the siding, cedar roof, rebuilding of windows, shutters, and, and paint, and the estimate provided to us is for $17,600 for, for the work.
Any questions?
Kathy Teberty, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, to you, or through you, to whomever, I don't know which one's the right person to answer the question.
That's what a capital W.
There you go. So there are many, many Boy Scouts that are very, very actively involved in the town. We just approved a warrant article that talked about maybe helping to fund Eagle Service projects. I think there's a possibility of maybe having Eagles work on this, or on their project to get to Eagle. Have we looked at, at anybody's possibly being interested in maybe just doing a piece of it, whether it be the roof or other parts of it? Is there a reason why we are not looking at such avenues?
It was brought forward to us by the town manager's office. The scale of it is, of the work is probably rather large for, for a single Eagle Scout project.
I, I agree, but, but if there's a possibility that they could do just the roof, I mean, it depends on what would be approved for them, but I think there's a great opportunity here, and we, again, just approved money towards Eagle projects for this, and...
You have to make that in the form of a question now you're debating.
So, so, so have we talked to any Boy Scout troops about this? Is there any consideration that's been put in for this?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to have Gary Persicetti, our facilities director, explain the difficulties and concerns we would have with such an approach.
First to answer your question, the answer is no. We have not talked to Boy Scouts at all about this. When you're doing restorations of historic properties like this, some of the most important parts is, like the roof being cedar, it's real important how you treat the underlay of the roof. If you disturb that and start to make penetrations through that, you'll end up having to replace that, which we don't want to do, and that's one way that it's been looked at. The types of repairs that this needs, it doesn't need siding taken off and put on. It needs repairs to lower corners of that. It needs a threshold replaced. These are all stuff that you have to tooth in the wood and get it to go, and I'm not here to debate what the abilities are of Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, and I don't want to do that. It's just this type of work we feel should be handled by professionals that do restoration of historic property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Dennis Sheen, Precinct 4. I guess my question sort of follows on the previous one, as far as, if you look at the size of the building, it's about the size of a shed. $17,000, I mean, I don't know, it seems like an awful lot of money. Is there something really special, special requirements, special abilities, special technical expertise required to repair this? I know we want it to look just like it was when it was built originally, but what's so special about this rehab that would cost us much money?
Again, Gary?
First of all, I mean, when you're out doing projects like this, you obtain estimate to get an idea of what you're looking to do. When a day is long, I'm not sure it will end up being that exact price. It could come in less than that. The issue with this building, a little different than the 1802 schoolhouses, this needs some, a bit of interior work as well. In this case, we have been asked to make the building so that it may have a little bit better use than it has now, and to do that, there's irrigation inside the building for the common that will be moved to the outside, and all of that needs to be done if they want to use it for a different purpose than it is now. To be honest with you, it's been used for storage mainly for the band and other stuff that's used at the common, and that's basically its use, and we've been asked by people that have come to the historic district meetings and things that, I guess at one time it used to be a information station. There's some interest to that and other interests. I don't know what it would be at the end of the day, but those are some of the things that are extra that you're, were not mentioned that would probably bring the cost up to what you're talking about.
You said there was something inside that had to be moved out. I missed that. What was that?
The, the irrigation on a common, okay, the main valve and the backflow prevention, all of that sits in that building. It will be moved outside because it's not an issue seen, it does not run in the winter.
So there's a bunch of plumbing work that has to be done. It's really got nothing to do with the building, but if you are going to adjust the building, you have to take it out.
Well, if you want to use the building, it needs to come out, yes.
I understand. Okay, so now I'm seeing numbers that I didn't understand before, because, you know, you're going to replumb something you didn't see. Okay, that costs...
No, I, I understand.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Question?
Yes, Donna Parley, what am I, 7, precincts never? Who owns the building now and who will once it's restored?
Well, the town owns the building now, and the town will own the building after it's restored.
What department?
It's under, yeah, Selectmen. The Selectmen.
Okay, all right. Just because of the farmer's market on the, on the common and other things on the common, it's like, who will hold the keys?
Facilities.
All right, thanks.
Colleen Stansfield, Precinct 6. There's more inside of that building than just the irrigation system, correct?
There's a couple of small rooms inside the, inside it. It's, you know, it's, you see the scale of it in the picture.
Right, but isn't there the entire electrical system that controls the common and the ability to have electricity on the common? Isn't that also in there?
Yes.
It's what? It's not leaving. Okay, so it's, is there going to be any upgrade to that?
Could you please go to the microphone?
There's some upgrades being done to the common based on what's going on in the center of town with the depression of utilities, and based on that, there could be some issues that arise, and we might have to beef up what's in there, but it would be related to the work that's being done now.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
It seems like an awful lot of money, and, you know, one of my hot buttons really is...
Could you ask a question? That you save for debate.
Is it leaking? Are there any leaks, and is there any dry rot?
Yeah, just stay here.
I know of no leaks at all. As far as rot, yes, there is.
There is rot?
Yes.
Now, have you coordinated all with the Middlesex Canal Committee, and, you know, what do they think about this?
I have not.
Has anybody?
Talked to the Middlesex Canal Committee.
There is, there is a, a committee, isn't there?
Yeah, there's, there's a Middlesex Canal Commission, which we have two members, and I'm sure we have a, one member in the audience here.
We have, has there been any thought about moving, I mean, it seems like a weird place for, it's an interesting building, but has, has there been any thought placed to putting it close to the remnants of the canal, where we could have, you know, a more logical use for that? have, you know, a more logical use for that building? Like maybe a little museum or something?
Through you, Ms. Moderator. I was reading the history of the various movements of the canal toll house and in the town meeting discussion, discussion of it, at one point it was stated that if there was an appropriate park-like area next to the canal, then that might be a place to move it to. But we do not have that right now.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, you know, in the near future, we're going to end up picking this thing up and moving it to a more logical place.
I hate to say this and I do it respectfully, but that's debate. Another question?
Nancy Donahue, Precinct 9. Could you tell me what this building is presently being used for or what will it be used for in the future other than storage?
Band equipment storage and it's been used in the past as visitors' area for like a Fourth of July celebration, but it has not been used every year for that.
Do you envision it being used for the purpose that you just said, like for an informational purpose or not?
It was certainly brought up at the, at our public hearing, being used for purposes like that for town celebrations.
So, that's a maybe. So, presently it is just used for storage and will be in the current future?
I have to defer to, yeah, the immediate plans are, but...
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else queued up for questions, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay. Now we're in debate and you can let it all hang out.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask everybody to vote yes on this. I, in answer to one of the previous speakers, I am a Middlesex Commissioner, Canal Commissioner from Chelmsford and there is no money from the Canal Commission for this house. It belongs to us. It was a gift by Judge Hadley to the town, so we own it. It's nobody else's building. The building inside is as it was when it was used as a toll house and you go into a little hallway, you bought your ticket there. We have signs that say how much it costs to ship something on the canal. And I did have it open as an information booth back several years ago. I lost control of it. I would like to get control of it again and I have people that are interested in doing this and we'd like to have it open during different celebrations on the common. We have a farmer's market now on the common every Thursday from July to October. We'd like to have it open for visitors and it's 174 years old. I think it's part of our history. There is no place where the canal was to put it without being vandalized. It's exactly in the right spot where it should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frances McDougal, Precinct 1. I am one of the chairs of the farmer's market, Chelmsford Farmer's Market, which will begin July 12th and it runs from 2:00 to 6:00 every Thursday afternoon. And we have, we have used, I've been in and out of that building many times because we used it for storage. I don't think we're going to be using it for storage, but what Peggy has said, it describes it perfectly on the inside and I think it would be wonderful to have it restored again. And I was glad to hear from Peggy that there are people who would like to do that, to be inside. I think that was the problem before when we wanted to keep it open for informational purposes. We didn't have, well, I'll say, the women, woman power, not manpower, woman power to keep it open. And I would like, I really want it restored. It's a wonderful little building and I hope you vote for it.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. I would like to say that I am the woman power that will open it as a, for the farmer's market. We also, there is a group that I know have expressed interest in opening both that and the 1802 schoolhouse to get education programs. The schools coming through it at certain times. We have to work that out with the schools. They used to do it and we really do want to bring these back into the modern life and let children know what the heritage is. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else queued up for debate? This article requires a majority vote and the article seeks appropriation of $17,600 of CPC funds for the restoration of the exterior of the Middlesex Canal Toll House. I might say for a small house that has two rooms and a hallway. Wow. If you're in favor of it, you vote yes. If you're not in favor of spending that money, you vote no and you can start now. It's 124 years, 1801 abstention. Article 20. Community Preservation Committee Chair James M. Lane Jr. moves that the town appropriate $4,125 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve to fund the restoration of gravestones at Forefather's Burial Ground located off of Westford Street on a five-acre parcel of land identified by the Board of Assessors as Map 73, Block 320, Lot 2.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So, Article 20 is for the Forefather's Burial Ground. The Cemetery Department has come to us in years past requesting monies for graveyard preservation work. This is in the same ilk and there's quite a nice picture. This is of forefathers and the next picture shows some of the types of preservation work that needs to be done. There's a number of stones that have fallen over and need to be pinned and reset, foundation work and some of the granite curbing is drifting and has to be, has to be reset. So, we've been given a detailed breakdown of costs for the, for the gravestone restoration work that needs to take place there and the amount is for $4,125.
Not seeing any. Recommendations? Fincom?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Majority vote. And the article seeks the appropriation of $4,125 of CPC funds for the restoration of gravestones at Forefather's Burial Ground. A yes vote is in favor, a no vote is against. Article passes. The vote is 139 to 1 with 2 abstentions. Article 21. Community Preservation Committee Chair James M. Lane Jr. moves that the town appropriate $3,972 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve to fund the restoration of gravestones at Riverside Cemetery located off of Middlesex Street on a 3.84 acre parcel of land identified by the Board of Assessors as Map 4, Block 19, Lot 23.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 21 is additional gravestone restoration work being requested by the Cemetery Department and the Riverside Cemetery is a very nice cemetery with a number of historic graves dating back to circa 1841 and off of Middlesex Street. So, the appropriation request is for $3,972.
Seeing none, Fincom recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Seeing no one queued up. We're ready to vote and it's a majority vote. This article seeks the appropriation of 4,472, no? I'm sorry. 3,972 from the CPC General Reserve to fund the restoration of gravestones at Riverside Cemetery located off of Middlesex Street. That's good enough. A yes vote approves the money and no vote does not. Article passes. It's 139, yes, zero no, zero abstain. Article 22, no action required. Article 23. Town Manager Paul Kohn moves that the town appropriate $13,500 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve and utilize a grant from Chelmsford Telemedia for the purpose of purchasing and installing theatrical lighting and a sound system as part of the project for the restoration and rehabilitation of the historic North Town Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Article 23 would appropriate $13,500 of community preservation money for a theatrical lighting system for the North Chelmsford Town Hall. This article is similar to an article for the Chelmsford Center Town Hall a couple of years back when we first approved the funding for the, for the Town Hall restorations. The monies would be used for theatrical lighting, spotlights, floodlights, the bar that holds the mall, lighting control panels. The lighting system would be modular and similar to the one being used for the Center Town Hall, so for an event that required additional lighting fixtures at either of the Town Halls that they could be interchanged, they could be moved from, from one site to the other, which is, which is nice. North Town Hall has been used for, in the past, was used primarily for Town Meeting a long time ago prior to the building of the old Center Town Hall. Town Meeting used to move back and forth between North Town Hall and the basement of First Parish Church back in the early 1800s. It was also used for plays and stage shows at that time too and there's a picture here that you have in your, in your handouts of turn of the century stage production, no doubt holding some of our ancestors are up on the stage. There were a number of stage entrances that could be used and for the productions. It would, the theatrical lighting will add a, an important dimension to the, to the North Town Hall use and make it, you could have theatrical productions, you could have movies, you could put on various events using the, the systems that are being generously donated by the Chelmsford Telemedia for the sound system and the AV projectors. And it would be a big benefit to the, to the uses of North Town Hall if, with this lighting system. This is just a picture of the North Town Hall probably several months back and just tremendous amount of change has occurred there due to the, to the reconstruction. This was all stripped bare when many of you probably toured it a few years back and it's really coming along.
Do you, are you going to have a security system in place prior to doing all the sound and lighting? Because it seems like a lot of money to put in. Is there a security system in place there yet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Fincom recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in debate. Seeing empty mics, we'll go to the vote. The article seeks the appropriation of $13,500 of CPC funds for theatrical lighting and sound at the North Town Hall. A yes vote approves it, a no vote rejects it, and it's only a majority vote required. Ready? Article passes. 140, yes, 1, no, 0 abstentions. Now we go to Article 24. Community Preservation Committee Chair James M. Lane Jr. moves that the town appropriate $25,000 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the purpose of open space preservation activities including capital improvement projects for publicly accessible open space properties including improvements to Chelmsford Land Conservation Trust parcels.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So, we passed a similar article back in 2007 for $25,000 and we have worked through almost all of that money on a number of different projects. There's been eight Eagle Scout projects with, where we've been providing up to 50% matching funds is the typical for, for an Eagle Scout project. This... funds is the typical for an Eagle Scout project. This slide here shows a garden shed, community garden shed that was built at Sunny Meadow Farm as Eagle Scout project. So some of the projects are pretty substantial. Also, the disabled access garden at, community garden at Sunny Meadow was also an Eagle Scout project. This is a slide of the Crooked Spring Erosion Control Footbridge that helped control a badly eroding area for Crooked Spring. Also, Chelmsford Open Space Stewardship has benefited from this fund and has applied and received funding for, most recent being fencing at the community garden at Watten Street, which has come together very recently and is looking very nice. The fund would also be available for the land trust because they have a number of open space parcels in town that are all publicly accessible. So as in the past, we would propose there would be open for them, too.
Any questions? Seeing none, FinCom recommendation?
FinCom recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Any debate? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. The article seeks the appropriation of $25,000 of CPC funds for open space preservation activities. A yes vote agrees, a no vote disagrees. Ready? Vote. Article passes. 143, yes, zero, no, zero abstain.
Thank you.
Article 25?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of Article 25.
Motion to waive the reading of Article 25. All those in favor? Oppose? Reading is waived. I have an amendment here from Colleen Stansfield. Would you please come to the mic and exercise your amendment?
The amendment is, it was on the table in the far back, and it was just a last minute, did not make the book, the addition of a couple of words into Article 25. They are on the handout and they are bolded.
Are you going to have someone make a presentation or is that it?
Yes.
Evan should be making a presentation on it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to call to the podium Evan Bolansky, our Community Development Director, who's going to present the next several articles regarding zoning on behalf of the Planning Board, which reflects the work of the Planning Board as well as the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. Thank you.
Is he going to speak to this amendment?
He's got to speak to, yes, and the article.
Good evening. Just quick, some quick background on the zoning articles.
Could you speak to the amendment? Because we have to vote the amendment and then we have to vote the article.
Yeah, I'm going to. The amendment is part of the PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yep. So all of the zoning articles are based upon recommendations in the 2010 Master Plan. Members of the Planning Board and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, most of who are in attendance at this body tonight, worked on these zoning articles. Specifically, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee researched and drafted and presented the articles to the Planning Board. Joint meetings were held. The Towns Building Commissioner conducted an internal review. Town Council has conducted a review as well, and the Planning Board conducted their public hearings in the April and May. So Article 25 and 26 are those separate articles. They should be viewed as comprehensively as they directly relate to one another. Article 25, this article proposes a comprehensive update of the definitions. It revises 25 existing definitions, creates 16 new definitions, deletes three existing definitions. The purpose of this article is to address changing land use trends, specifically to ensure compatibility and protection with neighborhoods and town character, as well as improve clarity.
Before you continue, I've just been advised by Town Council that what we have is not an amendment but a revised main motion, and so no vote is necessary because it comes from the Planning Board who wrote the original motion. So you may continue.
The seven existing definitions that are proposed for revision include a contractor's yard, family, lot frontage, light manufacturing, a nursing home, convalescent rehabilitation home, office, and fast food restaurant. Three existing definitions to be deleted are animal kennel or hospital, campground, and group residence. The eight new definitions that are proposed are currently listed in the use table but are not defined. They are bank or financial agency, cemetery, contractor's yard, fairgrounds, carnivals, and similar outdoor events, hospital, motor vehicle sales and repair, motor vehicle body repair, and the final one is self-storage mini warehouse. Eight new definitions are proposed. First one is a drive-through window. Second is a helipad, and I'll just, I'll say, stay right now. The helipad is only accessory to hospitals. Third is heavy manufacturing. Next one is motor vehicle, motor vehicle towing and storage, motor vehicle fueling station, motor vehicle washing facility, and the final one is research and development. The next two slides speak specifically to the revision, the Planning Board revision to the amendment. The specific amendments are in bold, so they're individual words. So for commercial entertainment, recreation, indoor, the term profit has been inserted. For contractor shop, the term "and," so in the last sentence, is proposed to read outdoor displays, storage, and sales are prohibited. Under the term impervious, it is, the reference to the bylaw is proposed to be inserted. Under motor vehicle fueling station, the phrase "but not including" is proposed to be inserted. Under nursing, convalescent rehabilitation home, the change is on the word chronically ill. You'll see the portion there which is bold. And under salvage yard on the bottom, the term or distribution is proposed to be deleted. That concludes the presentation on this article.
Are there any questions?
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, we were given a very legalese-looking document on our entry into the hall tonight, and to me, there's not a member in here, maybe a couple lawyers, in, as a question, I guess, that has read this. Am I wrong? Did I just not get this at home or something?
The amendment, the revision to the amendment, to the article?
We were told it was an amendment and then...
I corrected that. I said it's a revision to the original motion, which is...
Correct. We were told that it was an amendment, and then the moderator corrected that and said it's an entire rewrite of what we were given last week tonight in the hall.
The only changes to the warrant is what was specifically handed out this evening. It was the bold, the four or five bold terms and phrases that are changes to what you received in the warrant book.
Mr. Moderator, what I'm looking at looks like a lot of business changes to our, to fueling, contractor yard, profit, entertainment, nursing, convalescent, salvage yard, all changes to the kinds of business we do in town, and it's related to zoning, which I assume we would do a two-thirds vote. However, as a town meeting member who didn't have an opportunity to read the final document that was changed this evening, are we expected to vote on this this evening?
Yes, you could probably learn from the debate that will transpire.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Karen Kowalski, Precinct 1. I had a lot of questions on these, on this article.
You're allowed to ask, too.
Two, but there's a lot in there.
Lump them together somehow.
Well, I guess my main one, my main one, I probably shouldn't be concerned with it because I'm sure it's fine. You had placed Alzheimer's Facility, Assisted Living Facility, and Congregate Living Facility under facilitated senior living. Does that mean those will no longer take anyone under 60?
The current zoning bylaw defines that facility as predominantly or primarily occupied by people who are senior and elderly.
So that means...
It does not mean it's 100% primarily substantially occupied by people who are seniors and elderly.
Why is the need for it?
I'm sorry?
Why did you have the need to place it under senior living?
The current zoning bylaw, the section that it references already regulates the facilitated independent senior living facilities, of which Alzheimer's is a type of.
Okay, so under 60 is okay if they need the facility?
Correct.
All right. And then there was another one about the gas, where you get your gas. I'm just trying to find it. That they can no longer sell food at gas stations? Motor vehicle fueling station, no food items that are prepared or individually proportioned to order? Dunkin' Donuts, hot dogs, Dunkin' Donuts.
It allows prepackaged items to be sold. The intent here...
Some of them have Dunkin' Donuts where they prepare food?
Correct. So the Dunkin' Donuts would be regulated as a separate business, which is a fast food.
At the gas station.
Correct. So they're separately regulated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee makes no recommendation on this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends approval.
Any debate?
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. My line of questioning was around the problem that we saw Congress do recently, where they said we have to pass it in order to find out what's in it. When we walked into town meeting tonight, we were given a sheet of paper with a bunch of lines drawn through it and a bunch of bold words. I was just told that there were three public meetings referring to this extra piece of paper, which changed what's in the finance book. Last Wednesday, we went to a, a lot of members went to a pre-town meeting, and we didn't have this piece of paper. We had this book and another document. I'm very uncomfortable voting on zoning changes because they represent that footprint under our businesses and our homes. And very often, what I've seen in our town is when a zoning changes, all of a sudden, six weeks or six months later, a building pops up there, and it was just, it was just an overlay change or something like that. Zoning is something that is a very solid piece of your property value. There are a bunch of businesses listed here, hospitals, gas stations, commercial entertainment, all the things that generate business, small business, large business. I recently moved a building from Woburn to Andover, and the thing I discovered, and I told two reps and a senator, that I would never recommend moving a business to Andover as a town meeting rep in Chelmsford because of the difficulty in one level of bureaucracy, and it wasn't related to zoning. But when you make it difficult for a business to understand what their zoning is going to be under their feet, you can change the ability of another company to move into your town. So I'm going to vote no on this because I didn't have a chance to really read through this and understand how I'm changing the footprint of the zoning for these businesses. I was only given this tonight, and I didn't attend the three meetings, the public meetings where apparently this was discussed. So I don't want to pass something and then read about it later. I'm going back to the point where some language 30 years ago affected a piece of property in the center of town because of a different interpretation. I don't want to be in that position, so I'm voting no.
Thank you. By the way, you should have been at the red microphone. Next?
I'm not sure which one I should be at. Ruth Monahan, Precinct 3. I'm usually pretty good at proofreading, and I've been looking at this piece that we picked up tonight and this piece that was in the book that we had before, this thing here, and I'm not seeing one bit of punctuation that is different in the two. And I just wanted to point that out to Brian, that it is the same. This is just another copy of this.
Next.
Hi, Karen Utech, Precinct 5. I want to just clarify, to make sure everybody's on the same page. The changes that this, what did you call it, modification have made include 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 words? Is that correct?
Correct.
Profit, and, are, but not including, an ali on chronic, and ill. Correct?
Correct.
Everything else is identical to what was previously stated?
That's correct.
Do you feel that the changes have any substantive change other than just some small words? Do they actually change the meaning significantly?
They're insignificant changes.
Thank you.
Colleen Stansfield, Precinct 6. I was going to point out the same thing, and really it was just a grammatical change, just so that everybody's comfortable with it. Thank you.
Any other debate?
Mark Dolat, Precinct 7. This is more of a question. Do either of these articles, the changes to contemplate mixed-use development, was that the intent of any of these changes?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Seeing no more debate, let's put it to a vote. It's a two-thirds majority vote. The article would amend the zoning bylaw word and usage definition section. All those in favor of amending the zoning bylaw word and usage definition, vote yes. All those against, vote no. Now. The article passes, was a two-thirds majority. The yeses were one fourteen, no's were one eighteen, I'm sorry, eighteen, and nine abstentions, which do not count in a two-thirds majority. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move we waive the reading of article twenty-six.
Motion to waive the reading of article twenty-six. All those in favor? Opposed? Reading is waived. This is submitted by the planning board, oh, you're speaking.
Okay. So article twenty-six is the second step related to the previous article. Article twenty-five adopted and revised definitions. Article twenty-six intends to realign the article's twenty-five action to reflect a new use table, and in doing so, twenty-two existing uses are revised, twenty new uses are created, and two existing uses are deleted. Again, the purpose of this article is to update and modernize, uh, the use table to address changing land use trends, ensure compatibility, uh, with neighborhoods and protection of town character, as well as improve clarity. The twenty-two existing uses that are revised fall into two types of revisions. The first is how a use is regulated within each zoning district. So for example, a use may be permitted by right, it could be allowed by special permit from the planning board or zoning board of appeals, or it's prohibited. The second type of revision is in the case where a special permit's required, what board is issuing that special permit? Is it the planning board, or is it the zoning board of appeals? The eleven, uh, uses that are proposed to be included that are currently referred to in the zoning bylaw, but were not listed in the current use table, and those, those include the following: Alzheimer's facility, assisted living facility, independent living facility, congregate living facility, major recreational equipment, animals accessory to dwellings, barn sale, yard sale, garage sale, or flea market, home occupations, accessory exempt, massage service establishment, and accessory industrial. Similar to the definitions, seven new, uh, uses are proposed for inclusion in the use table. They are as follows: motor vehicle towing and storage, motor vehicle fueling station, motor vehicle washing facility, a medical clinic, family daycare non-exempt, heavy manufacturing, warehouse, and research and development. That concludes the presentation on this article.
Andy Solinch, precinct seven. Page forty-three, uh, what board issues special permits? Planning board, zoning board? Is this going to create a, a, a deal where, uh, people go shopping? If they go to planning board, they get approved? No, I got turned down to a planning board. Well, I'll go to zoning board, because you have an or between them. Explain how that hierarchy works.
Sure. In the, um, in the use table, which is appendix two of the warrant book, the entire use table is listed, so for each use within each zoning district, the use table clearly distinguishes whether it is the planning board or the, or the board of appeals. There's no choice in the matter. The use table decides that for, for, for the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, precinct nine. Uh, through, through you to the previous speaker, uh, is any of this, uh, re, redefining of uses, uh, a precursor to, uh, the article for which there will be no action tonight, article twenty-seven, which is the one-twenty-nine overlay district?
No, completely unrelated.
So none of, none of the definitions that would be in this article would ever apply to the overlay district that, at some point?
No, it's not setting, it's not setting, um, the, the framework for the next article.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking if any of these usage definitions would apply eventually within the overlay district.
If, if an overlay district, uh, is approved, um, then retail as defined, or restaurant as, as defined, would apply to an overlay, but that, that would only take place if an overlay were to be approved.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I'm going to do my three sixty. One additional question, please. Would the, uh, as a matter of, as a matter of question, through you to the previous speaker, would the proposed overlay district require these uses to be in place in order to be, um, enacted?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Would these definitions require, be required to be on the books in order to have an overlay successfully enacted?
The, the, the uses, the definitions in the use table that we're, that we're voting on tonight, um, pertain to existing zoning, so although some of the uses may pertain to a proposed overlay in the future, this use table makes no reference of a, of a, of an overlay district.
Okay, uh, I'll see if I can rephrase. What, will you be, would you, would it be possible to create an overlay district with those types of uses without these definitions in place?
The, um, the definitions could be used to create an overlay district.
I'm, I'm not, I, I guess I'm not...
We're not, I think my confusion is we're not voting on an overlay tonight.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to understand is whether or not this is a precursor to some future act.
No, because town meeting would have to vote on an overlay.
The answer is no.
I'm not getting it.
Next.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Haverty, precinct seven, uh, also the chair of the zoning bylaw review committee, and I just wanted to assist Evan in the answering of that question. If some point in the future, um, we revisit the issue of an overlay district for Route one-twenty-nine corridor, a, any of those definitions may apply, they may not apply. If necessary, we could introduce new definitions as part of that overlay bylaw. So it, there's nothing that's going on in this article that would have anything to do with setting the stage for a one-twenty-nine overlay article. These are completely addressing issues that are in the current bylaw.
Thank you. Finance committee, have a recommendation?
Finance committee makes no recommendation on this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Planning board?
Planning board recommends approval.
We're in debate? I don't see any debaters, so... We will vote this article would amend the zoning bylaw use regulation schedule section. If you're in favor, you vote yes. If, if you press the one key, if you're against it, you press no. If you don't know what to do, or you don't care, you press three. Article passes, one-nineteen, yes. Fourteen, no, and since it's a two, two-thirds vote, six, uh, abstentions do not enter into the calculation. Passed by a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-seven, no action. Article twenty-eight?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of article twenty-eight.
I have a motion to waive the reading of article twenty-eight. All those in favor, please raise your tickets. Reading is waived.
Article twenty-eight seeks to codify current procedures and interpretations related to by right activities for one and two single-family structures. Those activities would be such as an addition or an expansion to a one- or two-family structure. Secondly, it adopts thresholds for by right activities. It reflects current legal case law, and, um, the fourth bullet here, it clarifies an existing provision related to the extension of non-residential structures. For purposes of one and two-family structures, this article only pertains to pre-existing non-conforming structures. And it pertains to it, uh, in the following manners. For purposes of existing by right activities to be codified, the following activities, a building permit may be issued for an addition or an expansion when there is insufficient lot area frontage, there is compliance with current standards, there's an extension along an existing non-conformity, uh, plane along the, um, property line, and the activity is within the existing footprint. Those four activities currently do not require zoning board of appeals approval.
Any questions?
Uh, have some more.
Sorry.
The second item is to create new thresholds for by right activities. Where, where you are allowed to proceed by right, you still need to comply with the table. So if you do not comply with the table, you're required to receive a special permit when the total gross square foot of the structure is increased per the table. This table is a sliding scale based upon the existing lot size in which you, in which, uh, properties are located, based in, uh, based upon the increase in the gross square footage of the structure. The sliding scale is intended to prevent or minimize mansionization, and there's been numerous examples in town in recent years where by right activities have changed a modest, single-family home and doubled it in size, and it has not been compatible with the neighborhood. So as you can see here, for, for lot sizes under ten thousand square feet, which is predominantly in a Westlands-type neighborhood, you'd be, you'd be allowed a by right expansion of ten percent of gross square footage. If you exceeded ten percent, again, this is only for pre-existing non-conforming structures, you go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. For lot sizes between ten thousand, um, and nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine, it'd be a twenty percent increase, and so on for, uh, twenty thousand square foot lots and above. The third item in which this article addresses is reflecting current case law. The bylaw would propose to require a special permit for non-by right activities rather than a variance. In essence, this is a benefit to single-family and two-family homeowners as it reduces the legal threshold in which you would need, uh, to prove to the zoning board and your neighbors, uh, in order to determine, um, that your proposal was not detrimental to the neighborhood. That concludes the presentation.
Mr. Moderator, uh, George Ripsom from precinct four. Uh, when I was looking at the, um, material that you just, that the previous speaker just presented, good, uh, it says here, under ten thousand feet, and I said, okay, that's a house, and if I can do that, and it's ten percent, would it be possi... And then he read into it that this is for a lot size of so-and-so. Will that appear when we see whatever derives from our vote to follow?
Within the, um, actual warrant book, the table does say that column is labeled lot size.
I'm having some trouble tonight figuring out which of the five books and three pieces of paper we're actually reading from, but if you assure me...
The warrant clearly does label that column.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee makes no recommendation on this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Planning board?
Planning board recommends approval.
A yes vote, and this is a two-thirds majority, a yes vote would amend the zoning bylaw non-conforming uses and structures section, and no vote would not amend it. So, get ready to vote? Article passes, a hundred and twenty-one, yes. Nineteen, no. One abstention, which does not enter into the two-thirds calculation. Article twenty-nine?
Mr. Moderator, I move we waive the reading of article twenty-nine.
Motion, uh, made to waive the reading of article twenty-nine. All those in favor? All those against? Reading is waived.
Article twenty-nine proposes to adopt a new zoning bylaw to regulate commercial solar photovoltaic ground facilities. Currently, the state zoning act prohibits unreasonable regulation for solar energy systems. The town of Chelmsford zoning bylaw is silent on this term in, in regulating these facilities. As such, solar energy systems are permitted in any zoning district currently in Chelmsford. This picture displays what we're talking about as it pertains to a commercial solar ground facility. This article seeks to adopt specific zoning regulations to ensure proper siting, adequate site design, protection of abutting properties and neighborhood, it would require a site plan review by the planning board, and require public hearing and direct abut notifications. The regulatory strategy is as follows. The facilities would be permitted in all zoning districts. Dimensional requirements would be as follows: where abutting or within a residential zone or use, it would require a minimum lot area of three acres, with minimum ten-foot buffer along property lines, and twenty-five-foot setbacks for structures, including the solar panels themselves. Where it is abutting non-residential uses and zones, a ten-foot setback for structures would apply. The bylaw identifies specific design standards in which the planning board would have the ability to regulate. These include perimeter security fence, adequate access for emergency services, submission of an emergency response plan, minimizing visual impacts, it would minimize lighting on site, as well as signage, utilities would be required to be underground, and would minimize clearing of vegetation. The by, bylaw also speaks to required maintenance provisions and a process for discontinuance. That concludes this presentation.
Dave McLaughlin, precinct six. I asked this question at the pre-meeting, and unfortunately, I, the answer escaped me, and I didn't quite understand the answer. This bylaw talks about a commercial solar facility, and the bylaw also says that we will allow a commercial facility in all zoning districts, which means a residential district. There is a limitation that says a lot size must be greater than three acres in a residential district. We have a number of parcels in this town that are in residential districts that are greater than three acres. Does that mean they can have a commercial facility on them?
They would meet the minimum requirement of the bylaw. They would still need to apply to the planning board and meet all the other criteria. So just because you have three acres does not necessarily mean that you can comply with all the other provisions.
But if they could, it could be located in a residential area.
Correct.
Okay. For, for example, I'm, I'm asking, there are a number of... For example, I'm asking, there are a number of parcels that are residential that are under Chapter 61 for farming. Those restrictions can be removed, and then they could be developed commercially under this bylaw, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Karen Utech, Precinct Five. So you say there, if you could go back to the, yeah, it says that there's a minimum 10-foot buffer along property lines, but a 25-foot setback for structures? So what, what would end up between that 10 feet and 25 feet?
Is it abutting, a commercial, or a residential?
No, for the, within a residential, abutting or within a residential zone.
Okay. So from the, from the, from the property line and moving into the commercial solar farm property, the first 10 feet, the minimum first 10 feet must be a landscape buffer?
Yep.
Between 10 feet and 25 feet, you'll have a fence, you'll likely have a perimeter security access road, and at 25 feet from a, from a property line is where the, is where the first structure could be located.
So those solar panels are considered structures?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Next.
Henry Parley, Precinct Seven. I believe, because I went through looking at this for my farm, I'm not going to do it, but I believe solar panels are considered agricultural use, and there are acreage requirements on that, and that's what I had got from the state when I was looking at it.
Certainly, if, if a property is legally classified as agriculture-
Well, solar's considered agricultural.
You currently have the right to do a solar farm.
That's, to the first man's question, the whole town's overlaid with agricultural use.
Right, I think the, the previous speaker was referring to if a, if an agricultural property, if the property owner chose to take it out of agriculture, assuming it was under 61 and the town had a right, refused its first right refusal.
Brian Latoya, Precinct Four. Mr. Speaker, the, the definition of commercial, if I put an array of solar panels on my roof, residential roof, very typically, my understanding is that it, it works during the daytime and it sends the power backward through the line, and I get commercial value for that. In other words, I trade money back and forth. Is that a commercial use or not?
Firstly, the bylaw only pertains to commercial ground-mounted. Secondly, it does not pertain at all to residential roofs, roof installations. Residential, single-family residential roof installations are not considered commercial, even though you may have a private arrangement with, with a, with a third-party vendor.
Okay, so if we planted one in the backyard, if you had a big enough property-
This bylaw does not pertain to single-family.
Because it's not commercial, because I'm not getting enough money, or is there a threshold?
Yeah, the threshold, the, it's defined as, a commercial facility is defined as 250 kilowatt or larger. That's essentially one acre of, of solar panels.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct Four. My question is regarding, God, I just lost my train of thought. It's getting late. Wow. Okay, so right now, there's no regulation at all on these things, and this is putting regulation in place to speak to these type of, of facilities, is that correct?
Correct, it's creating local regulations, hence protection.
Great, okay, so there was nothing, this is something, so we have something.
Correct.
Thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none, do we have a recommendation from Finance Committee? You have a question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
To council, the state statute says we're not allowed to impose overly restrictive measures in not allowing these types of facilities. Would keeping these structures out of residential areas be considered overly restrictive?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, there really isn't any case law around that question, but what the state law says is that the town cannot impose unreasonable regulation. And because of the, generally, the size or the amount of land in a, in a typical town that is zone residential, we would be concerned that if you prohibited them altogether in a residential zone, that it would subject the bylaw to a legal challenge. Whether we would prevail on that is another question. I mean, obviously, we would argue that it is not unreasonable to exclude them from residential zones, but frankly, I think that would be a stretch.
And to follow up secondarily, if we were to make such a, a proposal by making an amendment to this particular article to suggest that the planning board change the zoning to include removal of residential zones in consideration from a photovoltaic cell system, would we be then creating a situation where we would definitely have a, a court battle that we would have to then fund?
Counsel?
Well, Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, you would only have a court battle if someone sued you. And I, I don't know whether anyone would bring a lawsuit. They might not bring a lawsuit immediately, but you know, they could-
They could.
In the future, if someone wanted to come in and develop a solar, a ground-mounted solar system, they could challenge the validity of the bylaw at that point as being inconsistent with state law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another question?
Mr. Moderator, Paul Haverty, Precinct Seven. A follow-up question through you to Town Council. If we did get into the situation where a bylaw was thrown out because of an amendment, would we then be left in a situation where there is no regulation of commercial solar farms in residential areas in town pursuant to general laws, Chapter 48, Section 3?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, it would, it would depend upon what the court did. It would be possible that the court could throw out the entire bylaw, which would mean there would be no regulation at all. Or they, I suppose it's possible the court would invalidate only that provision that prohibited them in residential zones. I would point out, however, that the warrant for this town meeting made this a permitted use in all zoning districts, subject, as the town planner has indicated, to all of the performance standards in the bylaw. So a question that I would have is if you attempted to amend this on town meeting floor by making this a prohibited use in residential zones, I would have a question, and I'd have to confer with the moderator as to whether that would even be within the scope of this warrant article.
So then, as a follow-up question, if this warrant article does not pass, does that leave the town in the situation where currently there, anyone could come in and build a solar farm in a residential area without regulation?
Mr. Moderator, did you, did you say if, if it did not pass, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that would be the situation.
Thank you.
You would, there's no regulation now.
Correct, thank you.
Let me remind everybody that if anyone intends to make an amendment to a motion, that paper must be filled out before you come to the mic to make your amendment. So, seeing no more questions, recommendations, FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this article.
Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends approval of this.
We're in debate. Seeing no debate. This article, we're going, voting it requires two-thirds. This article would amend the zoning bylaw by adding a commercial solar photovoltaic facility section. If you're in favor of that, you vote yes. If you're against that, you vote no.
Article passes. We have 126 yes, 13 no, and one abstention that does not count in the calculation. Article 30.
Mr. Moderator, I move we waive the reading of Article 30.
Motion to waive the reading of Article 30. All those in favor, raise your tickets. Reading is waived. Article 30.
This article proposes to adopt a new general bylaw via homeral petition to protect scenic roads. Current situation in Chelmsford is that nine scenic roads have previously been designated by town meeting in 1974, '76, and 1984, in accordance with the MGL, Chapter 40, Section 15, the scenic road state statute. However, a local bylaw was never adopted, which has resulted in a general lack of awareness and a lack of consistent administration. Currently, the town does operate in accordance with the state statute. These two slides picture two existing scenic roads. The top one is Robin Hill Road, the bottom one is High Street. These slides clearly indicate existing shade trees and stone walls in relatively good condition in spirit of the scenic roads bylaw. This article seeks to adopt specific regulation in addition to the state statute to ensure protection from tree cutting and removal, protection from stone wall removal and destruction, review and approval by the planning board, and public hearing and abutter notifications. This existing condition on Robin Hill Road would not be allowed under the proposed zoning bylaw, under the proposed scenic road bylaw. The key provisions of the bylaw are as follows. The bylaw applies only to tree and stonework, stone wall to work within the right-of-way. This graphic depicts what a right-of-way entails and includes. As you can see, the public right-of-way often extends beyond the roadway paved surface. It very often includes shade trees as well as stone walls. The article also only applies to trees with a six-inch diameter or greater. It would specifically exempt removal of invasive trees, vines, and shrubs, some of which include bittersweet and honeysuckle. No approval is required whatsoever for the removal of invasives. It would only apply to more than five feet of stone walls. It would specifically exempt up to 15 feet of stone wall removal for purposes of driveways with approval of the DPW director. It would specifically exempt up to 10 feet of temporary stone wall removal with approval of the DPW director. It also coordinates the process of the existing Public Shade Tree Act, which we spoke about earlier, which is administered by the town tree warden. And finally, the bylaw would be enforced by the building inspector. This is a graphic that is, that is referred to in the bylaw that graphically identifies the extent of the existing nine scenic roads. That is, that concludes this presentation.
George Ripsum, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, one of my constituents has given us a question relative to this article saying that they personally have put in trees since they're buying the property, such that the trees have grown to exceed the six inches, and some of the limbs appear to need trimming. And they read this and feared that it meant that they have to go to the planning board, and there's something like three months of delay for them to actually to take-
Any question?
Was my constituent correct in the reading of this particular article as the question was stated?
Unlikely. The trees were probably planted on their own private property and not within the town right-of-way. So it would not require any participation in this bylaw.
But if one of those, Mr. Moderator, if one of those limbs to which they're addressing their attention did overlap the town roadway, then they have to go through that delay and the appeal and the rest of that.
Removing trimming of limbs for purposes of protecting real property, aesthetic improvements, or pruning of a tree for its vitality and health does not trigger any jurisdiction under this bylaw.
They will be pleased.
Thank you.
Tom Fall, Precinct Five. Mr. Moderator, a question to the Town Council, please, through you. Given the nature of New England, a lot of these stone walls, boundaries for property, is there any regulations on the book now that prohibits people from ripping up those stone walls because they are acting as boundary markers?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, I do not believe there are any prohibitions absent a bylaw such as this.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Kathy Duffett, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, could, you go back to the diagram that shows the right-of-way. I was wondering, is there a specific footage, here your display just says public right-of-way. How far on the person's property does this extend?
They're, they're very likely, they're variable, however, six out of the nine scenic roads have, do have a town plan, they have been surveyed. So Bayam Road has been surveyed, so the right-of-way is clearly defined. Garrison Road has been surveyed. Crooked Spring Road has been surveyed. Worthing Street has not, does not have a plan. Crosby Lane has been surveyed. High Street has been surveyed. Parker Road does not have a plan. Robin Hill does not have a plan. Mill Road has been surveyed. So for the streets that have been surveyed, we have plans on record in Town Hall that clearly define the right-of-way. For the roads that do not have a plan, there is still an ability to define the right-of-way. So the, the, the method for that would be that you would start with the private property deed and back your way into determining where the front lot line was on the private property. The other means is that very often, the stone wall itself is referred to as on-the-ground monumentation, and historically served as a boundary marker. So there's two, there's two methods. The most, the most obvious and straightforward is to use the private property deed to determine where that property line on private property begins in relation to the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up question, or second question. This also applies to driveways, so if you want to improve your driveway, this is, this is applicable as well? Or change your driveway, or update it, or?
It primarily pertains to creation of a new driveway. So specifically, it allows for the removal of stone walls up to 15, up to 15 feet to accommodate a driveway. So you could expand your existing driveway, or you could build a new driveway. And if you, if you removed under 15 feet of stone wall, you would need approval from the DPW director, not from the planning board.
Is that applicable to the trees as well? Because I'm actually kind of concerned about the trees, not the stone wall. Sorry.
The, the same exemption does not apply to tree removal.
Okay.
Next.
And the tree removal would, would simultaneously- trigger the shade tree, um, bylaw, which is administered by the Tree Warden.
Andy Zillen, Precinct 7. Brief question, uh, Mr. Moderator. Does Chelmsford have a list of invasive trees? I know that the, uh, one of them was mentioned earlier. Is that the complete list of invasive trees?
The, the bylaw references the state of Massachusetts Prohibited Plant List. It's, uh, was dated, um, January 1st, 2009. It has, uh, three pages. There's probably over 100 plants, trees, shrubs, and vines on this list.
Do you know if the, uh, Canadian maple is on that list?
Um, I'm just looking at the, is that the common name? I don't see Canadian maple as a common name on here.
Norway maple, maybe. Okay, but there is a list.
There is a list.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, um, since most of the scenic roads have been designated in Precinct 5, and my son lives on the other one, uh, where in the town would we be able to find the boundary limits by survey from the center of the road or in any other manner, so the people know where to look to determine what the limits are that they're restricted to?
For the roads, uh, that I indicated have plans, that, those plans would be available for review in the, in the Engineering Division.
In the Engineering Division?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Luttein, Precinct 4. A resident asked, um, regarding line painting, curbing, and signage, is there a standard once you designate these roads as scenic roads? Would the town still have the ability to put a double yellow line down it with white lines on the side, maybe curbing, maybe a, um, a bunch of signs in, in the road?
So this bylaw does not pertain to line striping. It does not pertain to signage. It would only pertain to curbing or paving if it altered, destroyed, removed trees or stone walls.
Susan Danderoff, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Is it correct to say, then, that there has been no, although these have been designated scenic roads, there has been no bylaw in the past?
Correct, there has not been a bylaw. So some of the exemptions that the bylaw proposes currently do not exist. They're not codified. We rely entirely on the state statute.
And, and that would mean, are residents informed of the regulations that pertain to their right-of-way along their roads?
Well, that's, that's part of the problem. Certainly residents are not informed, and just as importantly, many town officials aren't aware to the level that they should be regarding, uh, the provisions of the scenic road statute, as well as the proposed bylaw. So this, this would improve awareness, create a level playing field regarding a clear provisions, procedures, and protocols, so that everyone is aware as to what a scenic road is and what it means to Chelmsford.
And so if this passes tonight, is there a plan to inform the residents of those roads?
Certainly, we'll use the website, as well as local media.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, the Fincom have a recommendation?
Finance Committee has no recommendation of this article.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Mr. Planning Board involved in this? No, okay. This is a majority vote. The article would amend the code of the town of Chelmsford by adding a scenic road bylaw. If you're in favor of this, you vote yes. If you're against it, you vote no. And you can vote no. I'm sorry, we're in debate.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Duffett, Precinct 7. I am going to not vote in favor of this, even though I love trees and stone walls. I think that it is, it adds a great deal of burden, as it's written, to the citizens who live along this way. And I think that there is a little ambigu, um, it's not clear. If, you know, if you haven't, your street hasn't been surveyed, it's not clear for those people to find out where the, their, the exact space is. And, um, I think it adds a lot of burden to these people, and I think it might bear being reconsidered. So I'm going to vote no, and I'd ask people to join me.
Jim Pender, Precinct 1. This apparently came up as a result of the mistaken line painting, and then the ridiculous situation that ensued about the removal of those lines. This, this article is extremely heavy-handed. I, I suppose, I'd be, living on Robin Hill, I would be a beneficiary of this, but I don't want to have anything to do with it. I'd really urge everybody to vote against this. It's, it's, uh, really, it seems almost like special treatment. That's something that the people of High Street and Robin Hill and all the other, nobody's looking for that. What we need is to protect the, all the neighborhoods of this town, not specific called-out streets. And also, we need to focus on making sure that the neighborhoods have enough time to react, particularly when the town takes action. So my, uh, my suggestion is to go against this.
Next.
Mike Raesbeck, Precinct 1. I'm in favor of this, and one of the reasons I'm in favor of this is that it actually offers exemptions, uh, that are not in place. We are currently covered by the state's scenic road bylaw. It does not have such things as an exemption of 15 feet to run a driveway, or 10 feet temporary removal, things like that. Procedural things that I think are much better covered in a, in a local bylaw. And so I would support it for that reason, among others.
Thank you. Seeing no more debaters, I will repeat. This article would amend the code of the town of Chelmsford by adding a scenic road bylaw. If you're for it, you vote yes. If you're against it, you vote no. You start now. This is a majority vote. Motion passes. 98 yes, 38 no, zero abstain. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we are down to our last article, Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, I move we waive the reading of Article 31.
Motion to waive the reading of Article 31. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those opposed? Mr. Manager.
Mr. Moderator, I think it'd be appropriate for Public Works Director Jim Pearson to present what's taking place in this last article, since, since really he's responsible for what is going to take place.
Article 31 proposes to provide easements to construct a sidewalk, the missing link on Smith Street between Pleasant and Balsam, that two-block period, a two-block, uh, period of, uh, missing sidewalk. There are five easements along Smith Street, just a temporary easement, allow us to grade in to the sidewalk to the property, will disturb anywhere between two and five feet of property and blend it in. There are two permanent easements proposed across Smith Street. There are drainage easements, there's a, there's a depression in the road there. The water currently spills off the road, down through the, those two properties on the north side of the plan. We propose to take a permanent easement. There'll be, there've been assessed the damages at $1,250 apiece. And, um, if, if approved, I see this construction taking place in the next, started in the next six to eight weeks.
This is the last article. Let's keep the murmur down so that we can get through this. Question?
Well, Joyce, Precinct 1. Have the, um, neighbors been notified, and have they participated in discussions with you?
They have been notified, and the, the three people have, um, requested extra information, and we've met with, um, two of them, and we've talked with the third.
And one final question, that's, uh, seems that at the, uh, corner of Balsam and Smith, there's a, quite a drop and quite a cut-in. How are you going to handle that, you know, right on the corner of the...
The prop, the White House, yes. We, we met with them, um, whatever morning it was pouring rain, um, Tuesday, I think it was. They're actually both very excited about the project, and we're going to build a retaining wall with, um, modular block across their frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in the debate section. Or not. So, are you up for debate?
What I'd like to know, Jim, is the home that's on the corner of Pleasant and Smith, how far is the home from the street? It almost looks as though, once the sidewalk is built there, because I've looked at it many times, that it would almost be a different, do, how many feet away from the, like, the steps? Because that house has been already done.
The one on the corner of...
Yes.
Pleasant and Smith?
Yes, and Smith's. It's, it's 10...
I met with, actually, that morning with the, the next-door neighbors. It's probably a good 15 to 20 feet, anyway. All, all this work is proposed within the town property.
All right, so, it just seems so, it seemed closer to me than that, that's why I'm...
Thank you. Seeing no debaters. This is a two-thirds majority vote. The article would authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire a sidewalk easement on Smith Street for $2,500. If you vote yes, you're in favor of this. If you vote no, it goes kaput. Vote now. Something I said? The result? The article passes. 129 yes, no is one, abstain is zero. Since there is no more business before this town meeting, this meeting is adjourned. Incidentally, I'm thinking of...
And so we are adjourned. The spring edition of the annual town meeting has come to a close. Uh, tonight's edition went a whole lot smoother than Monday's, if you were with us then. For one thing, we had the automatic voting machine working, uh, humming right along. Uh, I think the, uh, the whole pace and, and the, the patter was, was a lot more predictable. It has been a very interesting meeting. Let me just recap briefly. Last Monday, we approved a, a budget for fiscal year 20, uh, 13 of $107.2 million. That's a 2.4 percent increase over the previous year. About $3 million was approved for capital planning, uh, projects. A new fire station is in the works and will be coming soon to a, a town hall near you. That's a $7.8 million project that has finally come to, to a conclusion. There's a, also, an additional $1.7 million was appropriated for the new Department of Public Works facility. And then after that, that was, uh, Article number 12. After that, it was a long series of, of zoning bylaws, bylaw changes, uh, the Community Preservation Committee, uh, funding requests. What I found interesting is that there was quite a bit of discussion over the 1802, uh, historic house on Town Common. That has, uh, going to be, have some exterior worked on it. All in all, a pretty smooth meeting this evening. Uh, town meeting reps, uh, getting into the flow. A mark change from Monday night, as I said. And so with that, we will bring this meeting to a close. We hope you've enjoyed the presentation here on Chelmsford Telemedia. Thank you for joining us, for Kelly Beadie and our entire staff. We hope you have a good night.